Good evening. I would like to call to order the Guthrie Public Schools Board of Education regular monthly meeting for Monday, November 11th, 2019. Roll call please.
Watts, Pearson.
Present.
Plag.
Here.
Bennett Johnson.
Here.
Davis.
Present.
Saleh.
Here.
Smithley.
Here.
Madam President, we have a forum.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in a moment of silence before we begin our meeting. Thank you. Agenda item number six, student recognition.
Let's see. Mr. Wimsey will go ahead and turn the page.
Hi, everybody. I'm Blake Wimsey of Foundation Insurance, and I'm here to present our November Student of the Month Award, which is going to Miss Teagan Denning, and she was nominated by one of her teachers, Mrs. Gilbert. And so in this particular program, we ask that the teachers nominate kiddos just for something awesome, not necessarily anything to do with grades, just how they treat their peers and their teachers. So, Teagan was nominated for a character trait of responsibility, and so I'm going to read to you guys what Miss Gilbert wrote. She writes, "Teagan loves being an assistant and serving others. She is extremely trustworthy. She would never say anything that hurt another in any way. She sees the light in others. She is a gifted writer. Teagan is thorough to the last detail. She is very respectful and patient. She is the one kid that will wait until she knows I'm not busy to pass me something." Very important, right? "I don't have to worry about her interrupting. Teagan might get overlooked because she's such a great, easy kid. Outside of school, she is quite an athlete, and I have even seen a video of her practicing the Christmas music program, Christmas program music with her guitar. She appears reserved, but there's much more to her sweet little soul. She wrote me a long letter of encouragement saying things far beyond her duties." Great job, Teagan. Congratulations, and on behalf of Foundation Insurance, we have a $60 gift card for you to go have a nice dinner at Stacy's Place.
Okay, agenda item number seven, comments to the board, citizens registered to see.
We have none.
Board members.
Quite a bunch.
Agenda item number eight, superintendent's report.
Okay. I have several items that are timely. First of all, with today being Veterans Day, we certainly want to thank all veterans for their service to our country. Students at each site participated in assemblies today, and I was fortunate enough to attend the assemblies at Central Elementary and the high school this morning. We had good attendance by our members of the American Legion and by veterans, and our students took the opportunity to honor them, and we've done it in a very respectful manner. The junior ROTC was, along with the band and the vocal, were on the floor of the gym, and we had a lot of veterans present there. I believe we have another assembly tomorrow, Mr. LeGrand, at the high school halls as well. So, in fact, one of the comments that I heard from, it was from the wife of a veteran is, it's fairly new to the community, is how impressed she was with the support that the school shows for veterans. And so, very good job by our school district today. Congratulations to our GHS cross-country teams. The boys place fourth at the state meet while the girls' team place fifth. Individually, Travis Saleh placed third in the boys' division while Mercy DeMith placed fourth and Tori Wells placed ninth in the girls' division. Overall, that's a great showing by our cross-country program. Good news out of guests, sixth grade science teacher Susan Whitehead won one of seven teacher travel grants from the American Meteorology Society, Meteorological Society, given nationwide. She will attend the 100th Weather Fest in Boston this upcoming January, courtesy of AMS. While there, she will present to the conference attendees her lesson on testing barriers to withstand hurricane winds and a tidal surge. So congratulations to Miss Whitehead for that and to Miss Davidson. And this is another one, you know, I think everyone knows that sometimes I get phone messages that maybe are not pleasant in nature, and so when you get one that is, you want to share it. And on the first of November, I received a message of thanks from a parent of a Stillwater Junior High School football player. On Halloween night, their team bus had a flat tire near Langston University while they were on their way to Yukon for a game. We got them up and running so they could arrive in time on kickoff, for kickoff. And so congratulations and thanks to Cody's bunch in transportation. And you guys may or may not know, that's kind of a thing that school districts do. If a bus is down, usually they can try to get in contact with the nearest district to try and get them up and going. Kind of, I can remember one night that, when I was coaching in Blackwell, that I was very thankful we were able to take a bus home from Chisholm, one of their buses, to get us home, and then we figured it all out later. So, thanks to transportation for that, and thanks to that parent from Stillwater that showed appreciation. And that's all that I have. And families, you're welcome to stay for the rest of this if you want to, but if you want to sneak out, it'd be okay too.
Okay, agenda item number nine, presentation on ACT High School College Success Report, Annual Dropout Report, and College Remediation Rate for Fiscal Year 2018-19 by Mr. Doug Ogle, Assistant Superintendent.
In front of you should have two packets. The first one should look like the PowerPoint up front with the high school, and that'll be the first PowerPoint in the slide we'll be going over. This is the data for last year's 2019 seniors, the last time they took the ACT, so they could, if they took it three or four times, it would have been the last time that they took it that was reported for this data. And so, here's our five-year trend ACT total tested, and so what we're looking at is from 2015 to 2019. You can see that there's more students that are taking the ACT. Some of the reasons we talked about the last three years is the state now pays for the juniors to take the ACT, and so some of these numbers you're going to see twice because when Mr. LeGrand gets up to talk with the next agenda item, when they go over test scores with the juniors, some of those, that's the only time that they take it is as a junior. For this slide right here, there's 242 students, so we're up from 193 that took it in 2018. For the state, we actually went down a little bit from 2018, 2019, but we're still up in that 42,000 range. And so, we're testing a lot of students, more than we did back in 2013, 14, 15, and you can see we were in that 30 to 32,000 range. Our English ACT, you know, what we're looking for is across the state, I don't know if you guys, there was a big media push that went out, the state ACT average did go down. And so, you're going to see on our slide, we dipped a little bit too with the state average, but not as much as the state average in some of these categories. And so, last year we were 16.8 percent, or 16.8 with the English, and this year we were 16.7. You can see that the state average dropped two tenths of a point.
Doug, may I ask a question? On these averages, is this for all kids, sophomores, juniors, and seniors?
These are the graduating class of 2019, last ACT taken.
So it's only the seniors, this is, okay.
Yes. You got correct, Chris, was that correct? Yeah. The math five-year ACT trend out there, kind of looked through it, 2015 was our highest. Then we looked at last year, we were 18.1. We did drop to 17.5 this year, where the state average dropped from 18.8 to 18.3. So we're right around that same, we dropped right there with the state average as well. Five-year trend, 2018, you can see we were at 19, we dropped to 18.4, again, a five tenths from the state average from 2018 to 2019. The science, 18.6 in 2018 to 18.3, and you can see the state average dropped four tenths from 19.4 to 19. And so we're kind of staying in that same trend. We haven't gained on much of that state average, but we're kind of dropping right there with the state average. And so, I know Mr. LeGrand's going to talk a little bit later, he's going to talk about some things that we're going to try to help our students with the ACT that they're going to do in this group. And then our composite, this is the total of all those put together for your ACT. If you look at 2018, we're at 18.2, and we're at 17.9, and then if you look at the state average, it dropped four tenths of a point from 19.3 to 18.9. So we gained a little bit, one tenth of a point towards that state average, but Ken, we want to be at or above state average, and so we have some ideas to try to help our students be successful with that. Next report is our college remediation rate. And so this is one of the things that is required, that we do talk about and present to the board from accreditation standpoint. And so this would have been the 2018 graduates, and so when they went in as freshmen last year in science, you can see, we did not have anybody that had been remediated in science, and state average was five tenths, right there. English, we're right there, 17.3 percent. If you go to math, we were 32, and the state average was 27.9, so we're close. And then the reading, we did take a pretty big dip, 14.7, and the state average is 7.4, so almost double on that one for our remediation rate for reading for that group of students. Next thing that we have to talk about is our exit report. And so, to give you an idea, these are students that start the school year with the summer, at least they're one day of school, and then when we finish the year. And so we'll kind of talk about where we were at. And so in seventh grade, there was 30 that exited to another school, one immigrated, and then 227 finished out the year. In the eighth grade, we had 36 that exited to another school, two dropouts, one exited to suspension, and then 268 finished out the year. Ninth grade, we had 48 exit to another school, five dropouts, one exit to homeschooling, one exited to suspension, and 232 finished out the year. One thing I want to point out is, when they exit to homeschooling, we get deemed as a school district because those are considered dropouts. Although we know where they're at, they're still considered a dropout on the report if they go to homeschool. And so, we wanted to show you that there was five that actually did drop out, that just, we didn't know where they went, but we did have one that went to homeschool, so we wanted to make sure that we highlight where they're at. Tenth grade, we had 42 exit to another school, seven dropped out, one immigrated, one exited to suspension, and 247 finished out the year. Our juniors, 24 exited to another school, five dropped out, three graduated, one immigrated, one exited suspension, 236 finished out the school year. And then last year's seniors, three exited to another school, eight dropped out, 24 finished out the year, and 183 graduated. One thing that we always kind of talk about is, what does that mean as a senior that finished out the year? They did not meet the graduation requirements in time to graduate, and so just to let you know, of those 24 students, we had 18 that finished this summer or fall, and so they will be caught on the next report. And so, they have finished, we have two that are in Blue Jay Academy, and then we have two that are special needs students that are still at the age that we still serve them, and so we don't graduate them until that time. Is that correct, Agent?
Yes.
Okay. And so, those are, they don't actually graduate until that time that they can actually age out. And so, we're doing a pretty good job of catching those. Like I said, there's 24 of those, but we're down just to a couple of those that we still need to catch. The dropout rate, there was 948 high school students, nine through 12. We had 24 not graduate on time and 26 dropouts. We just talked about the 24 students, talked about, there was 22 and then the two that we have in special ed. And so our dropout rate was 5%. Now, this is different than the cohort group. A cohort group is when they finish the eighth grade year, they start as ninth graders, that's the cohort all the way through, and the only way they can get off that cohort group is if they're deceased or if they move to another school that's accredited. And so, anyway, pretty good right there. We've been monitoring that, we've been between 4 and 6 percent, and so we're right there in that middle of where we're at with dropout. We're hoping, of course, with the Blue Jay Academy, that we can catch some of those kids and get that dropout rate lower. Any questions over the ACT trend data exit report?
I have a question, Doug. On page two, we noted that the total students took, 242 took the ACT. Does that include the juniors and the seniors?
They would have had to take it as a junior, their junior year if that was the last time they took it, because these are just the seniors from 2019. And so if they were a junior and only took it one time and never took it again, those would have counted on that 242.
Okay, so we have 242 seniors, is what you're telling me?
Yes.
But then we, but we graduated 183 on page 15. So where's all these extra people? Did they take it twice? Does it count twice if they take it twice, once as a junior, once as a senior?
That I don't know, Chris, is that?
Okay.
Because it's just, these are the data they send us on the sheet.
And we might have had some of those 242 that took it with us as juniors and then moved on to another school or exited to another deploration school, so we didn't necessarily have 242 kids that graduated, but as far as when they took it as juniors, we had 242.
Okay.
And Doug, this, the 242 number, does that include special ed students as well?
Yes.
Yes. Keep in mind, yeah. Some of which will not graduate.
Yes.
And will age out.
At 21?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, I just couldn't figure out the big difference.
Yeah, I'll go back to my sheet that sent us.
Okay.
Doug, I have a couple of questions. Concerning the dropout rate, where do we fall in line compared to the state average?
Our dropout rate has been a little bit higher than the state average. It's hard to tell on this one because this is not the one that's reported. It will be when we give the report card with the cohort group, and we're going to do that next month. And so I can't really give you an adequate answer to what that looks like to other districts until we do it with the cohort group.
Because the definition of a dropout changes somewhat as far as the kids that are figuring with that.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. Because the state only reports the cohort dropout rate.
I have another question. Concerning the composite five-year trend, any correlation, anything that points to why there's a gradual decline?
Well, part of that is because each year we tested.
Testing.
I mean, if you go back five years ago, that was pretty much kids that thought they were going to college or are going to college, but now, since it's part of our state test and they all take it as juniors, you'll also notice that the number of students that have taken it and have gone at, so you're getting all the students instead of just the ones that are going to college or think they're going to college.
Including special ed students?
Because 2017 is when all the juniors started taking the test, and so that's when you can start seeing that the scores started going down. And those numbers that were tested, you can see the difference of 10,000 students from 2016 to 2017.
So everybody's given the same test?
Yeah, we get an option as a district, and this is the first year we had to put a committee together. We could have taken the SAT or the ACT as juniors. And so, we had some teachers, counselors, and a couple of parents that did a quick survey, and everybody in, they picked the ACT for our region. And so, that's the one that most of our colleges use around here locally, and so that's the reason we stayed with the ACT.
Not to put words in Gina's mouth, but I think she's, I'm guessing she was referring to our special ed students giving the same test.
Yes.
At the ACT.
That's right.
Really, the only modification they give is extra time, but it's the same test.
Yeah, a question for us.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number 10, presentation by principals, Mr. Jeff Ball, Mr. Scott Graham, Ms. Danny Watson, Ms. Martha Todd, Ms. Susan Babason, and Mr. Robbie Weinwater on the final 20th through Oklahoma Testing Program, OSTP for Charter Oak, Carter Central, Fogerty Guest, Guthrie Junior High, and then juniors 2019 ACT scores for Guthrie High School by high school principal, Mr. Preston.
I'm going to get to the cycle tonight.
All right. First, since we're working with our students, it's good to have the discussions in committee as well, hear the committee about these test scores, so kind of see the things that we're doing. I'll just briefly go over, the scores at Charter Oak were below state average, which we're not happy with, and I'll talk to you about some of the changes we've made here in just a minute. But on page three, in regard to third grade math, we are at 19 percent, and state average is 43 percent. Third grade ELA, Charter Oak was at 18 percent, and the state average was 39 percent. The GPS average there, 26 percent. Fourth grade math, a little bit better in regard to getting close to the state average, 31 percent for Charter Oak, 33 for GPS, and 38 percent for state average. And then fourth grade ELA, 17 percent for Charter Oak, which was the same with GPS average and 30 percent was state average. The areas that we're focused on now is moving forward with, we've changed up, through leadership change, changed up our PLC time, which is, we now have a common plan time for all of the kindergarten teachers, first grade teachers, which we didn't have last year. And we changed our intervention time and how we're addressing to kind of go with the UVA model, and trying to loosen those bubble kids. Also recently, just really dived into our subgroups within the state report card and looked at those kids in the subgroups as to where we can make those improvements, and we'll be sharing that in the PLC, actually this weekend, next week, with our staff. So, that's some of the things that we're trying to do to raise those test scores, to make it, make these better for Charter Oak.
I have a question, it's actually for all the elementary principals, but since you're the first one up. What are we doing to align the curriculum between the schools? Because I've been looking at spelling words from one school to another, and they're not the same, and that's a concern to me. They're not even the same within a grade in one school. So how are we working on curriculum so everybody's on board doing the same thing?
Well, we're teaching standards and not just the curriculum itself. We're teaching the standards to go with the ELA in math, and so that's what we're basing that on, whether, what spelling words are used from side to side is, would be hard to pinpoint on that, but.
It would seem like you'd be giving them all the same spelling words in like the second grade, the third grade, the fourth grade. And then, it just says to me, and that's what I'm trying to understand, because I understand that you give them to a class and there's some children in there that may need a few more words because they're a little more advanced, or a few less words because they're, but I would think that every school would be doing kind of the same spelling, and they're not. And that's, it doesn't sound like we're giving the same education that way.
Sure, that's something to look at, but I don't, I think that from a, from a standard standpoint, we're teaching the standards, and that might look different from classroom to classrooms you're going to as to how they teach those. But that's something we can certainly look at with our.
I'm just curious as to why we're doing it that way more than anything else.
I don't know, maybe.
Sure.
And I know that most of our teachers give the BARE assessment, which is a spelling assessment, at the beginning of the year, especially first through fourth grade, and then based on the placement from that assessment, you might have five kids in one classroom with one particular set of skills that's doing one level of words, another set within that same classroom doing a different level because it's not a cookie cutter, one size gets all spelling list. It is individualized and grouped within that classroom based on their phonetic spelling pattern. That's what the BARE assessment gives. And just recently, Jeff had some teachers come over to meet with my teachers, and they worked on, I believe, math that day, but, so there's a process of getting that stuff lined up, but that's why you're seeing different spelling lists, is based off of that spelling assessment that goes, it's a universal assessment, and, but it breaks it down to a spelling pattern individualized for each student.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
So does the teacher have to give multiple tests to different groups?
Yes.
On Fridays or whatever?
Yes.
Okay.
It's kind of individualized and administrative among groups.
Any questions, Mr. Ball? Mr. Ray?
Hey, Carl, this past year, our third grade math was at 38 percent, the district average was 29, and the state was 43. This is one of our strengths in our third grade is our math. This was one area that we were higher, this was the highest area that we were in. In ELA, we are at 20 percent at Carter Oak, 26 at GPS, and then 39 percent for the state. Fourth grade, 25 percent at Carter Oak, 33 at GPS, and 38 for the state. This is one of our areas that we have really looked at why we were not as successful as what we thought we would be. 10 percent success on ELA for fourth grade, 17 district-wide, and then 30 percent for the state average. What we identified as one thing that we truly need to work on, the state test switched this year to a computer-based test. And so in our fourth grade area, we have made sure that there's iPad cards and Chromebook cards in each one of the classrooms, so that this entire year, the students have been practicing through Study Island on reading and also Prodigy Math, so that the students are prepared to actually not only read the information on the computer screen, but also put paper and pencil to that on the math problems, where they know they have to go back and, you know, it's just not A, B, C, and D. They have to go back and look and determine what the answer is. So we've been practicing that all year long. In reading, as you go through and you read that text, sometimes it may ask you to compare paragraph four and then paragraph eight. We work with the students, ensuring that they know how to go back to that text, to where they can actually look for paragraph four and paragraph six. And you know, it struggles many times on the computer to get them to go back, and so we've just really tried to ensure that they're looking at that information, going back, trying to determine that. And also, we're doing the same for third grade math. Their test this year will also be computerized. And also we're doing the same for third grade math, their test this year will also be computerized.
Any questions? Ms. Watson?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Okay. At Central, our third grade math, we were at 29% proficient, that was right at our district average, state average again was 43%. Our third grade ELA, we were at 21%. I have to brag on our third graders, 79% of them met RSA requirements this year, so that was a big deal for us, we were really excited about that. Fourth grade math, we were at 30%. This was pretty close to our district average at 33 and the state average was 38. And fourth grade ELA, this was the area we struggled with the most, we were only 9% proficient. Much like Mr. Graham mentioned, we found that a lot of our kids really struggled with that reading portion being on the computer. It had them toggled between two stories, it has a highlighter tool that none of them really knew how to use, so there were a lot of things that we felt kind of hindered them because I don't feel like 90% of my kids were really proficient on that test. So we started working, we're using MobiMax as a computer-based program, we have Success Maker, Prodigy, Epic, there are several online programs that we're utilizing to get the kids familiar with reading more on the computer and taking tests on the computer in hopes that that will help us increase that score next year. Any questions?
Our third grade math was 32% compared to the state average of 43%. I'll start that a little bit more in a minute. Our third grade ELA was 45% compared to state average of 39% and 80% of our students were RSA status. And our fourth grade math was 51% compared to 38% for the state average. And one thing I wanted to mention there is I've gone back with my fourth graders that were third grade year previously and the growth that they're making from math from third grade, you know, and I was looking at that third grade math being at 33%, but then left these students, those third graders or fourth graders this year, so I'm anxious to see that amount because our trend data so far has proven just over the years that from third to fourth grade, they're growing, that third grade year is their first year to take that test. And then as a district and as a side specifically, we are very low in our number sense, so we are, I haven't had the pleasure of addressing the curriculum committee yet, but one thing that I will talk about then is that we have taken those math standards and we've really drilled them down and aligned them to the Oklahoma framework that the State Department has put out, and we're focusing on those standards that are the highest, like number sense for example is 40% of the state test, so, or 48% for math. So we're focusing on those standards in the lower grades, trying to fill that gap and not playing catch-up because in third grade we are playing catch-up right now. And then our fourth grade ELA was 33% and the state average being 30%.
Any questions? For any board members who have not met, Emily Carpenter, this is my assistant that I have this year, so if you're ever going to come with me, you can begin to do the technology part. For our guest numbers that we have, we'll start with our fifth grade math, we were at 34% compared to the state average of 31. Fifth grade math has always been a strong suit of math guests, we've always managed to stay above the state average there. Our fifth grade ELA is 20% compared to 27% at the state. Those of you who've been around for a few years, in the past we had actually two ELA tests, we had the reading and we had the writing. We were always really weak in the writing, well they've combined those to just one test now, to where the writing is a component. It's still a separate day of testing where they have to read two different passages and then our answer and writing prompt that is very in-depth. This is the first year they've done it on the computer as well, they gave them a box this big, what kids didn't realize is that would squeak, you know, it would arrow down and spaced down and they'd never typed or anything like that, so a lot of them typed about that much and thought they were done. So again, something we've learned, because it was the first time they've ever done that on the state test, and we're working, you know, to get kids used to that now. In sixth grade, our fifth grade science also, we had, our guess average is 29% compared to the state average of 39%. Sixth grade math, 23% compared to the state average of 30%. And our sixth grade ELA was 32 compared to 36%. Some of the things that we're doing, yes, our Study Island, I know Scott said he has that too, we've used it in the past quite a bit, they have done a better job, it's through Edmonton, the company of aligning those to the Oklahoma academic standard, and are actually sending Ms. Carpenter and my two interventionists. The State Department is offering a workshop with Study Island to do their data-driven instruction from that online program, so hopefully that's going to give us a lot more insight and a lot more practice with that reading test next month. We've also with Deb's assistance have implemented the Flex program like Junior High is having, that is first thing every morning, that's what our school starts with. It's a more driven intervention for those targeted students. Monday, Tuesday is math, the kids walk in, if their name's under their teacher, they stay at their homeroom, if it's not, they look into the math teacher, if that's where their name is, they know they get their stuff and they go to the math teacher for that intervention. And we do that each day. Math is Monday and Tuesday, Thursday and Friday are reading, and then we have a writing Wednesday program. Fifth grade writing, teachers did go to a writing conference also that the State Department has offered, we're also targeting a lot more with our ELL students, making sure we're doing our due diligence that they're using that Rosetta Stone. It's definitely been a five-day-a-week, definitely for at least an hour every day, and so we've really seen some growth with those ELL students as well. Any questions?
I have a question, I should have asked this earlier, but since you're the principal standing there asking. When we say state average is 30% and our average is 23%, I'm not sure if I'm on the right slide that's up there, okay, 32 and 36, are we saying that the state average is 36% of the kiddos met qualifications?
Perfection.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So for our, when you look at just our guest students, only 32% met that, so we're focused.
So it's on a 100% basis, I mean, that's where we're looking at, okay, on all of these.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right.
Okay, so from Junior High, seventh grade math, state average was 35% and we were at 39%. Seventh grade ELA, 25% to the state average of 29%. Now, one of the things that we attribute some of this to is pretty much it cuts a few years back, we had to eliminate some positions and we got away from our reading and writing classes being separate. We went back to those being separate, but only had enough staff, well that had to be on a rotational basis, so our creative writing classes were only offered at a nine weeks at a time. I feel like that started to hurt us when we went into this new testing with OSTP, so we got back to, we got its approval, so we thank you for that of adding more staff and going back to a full year of creative writing where we can keep those writing standards separate from the reading standards and spend a full year on working on all those with our kids. So hopefully see improvement on that this next year. Eighth grade math, state average was 30, 23%, we were at 35%. And eighth grade ELA, we were 32, the state average was 30. And then with the eighth grade science, state average was 40 and we were at 51, so doing pretty good. Look to do better with that seventh grade ELA, which are now eighth graders this year, but you know, I think that keeping those two subjects separated in a full year with both of those will be hugely beneficial for our kids, so.
I got a question, sorry. So eighth grade ELAs at our last, or of the science, what is the science? Because the state average is always below, or it seems like that we've seen everything below 50%, I mean, we're basically saying 50% of the kids are not getting it, or in this instance, 60% of the state kids are not meeting qualifications. Is it a testing issue, is it? I mean, obviously it is.
I always get this question, I always get in trouble too. But if, here's, here's.
I was looking at Doug before we get to the.
Do you want Doug to answer this?
They were both looking away, so I'll look at you.
I mean, I know, was it two years ago they changed the testing?
Yeah, so I think, I think in order to answer your question, and there's two words that I can't say, but I think to answer your question, if you do research on the NAEP and how Oklahoma ranks within the national average of NAEP, you will see how those numbers really closely correlate to what they look like on OSTP. And so if Oklahoma has ranked in the middle of the pack and scored at a 40% level on the NAEP, chances are you're going to see Oklahoma score somewhere around a 40% on the OSTP also. And actually, I took a screenshot over on the news the other night, and it actually said this without saying it, but they were comparing how Oklahoma's scores on the reading test at certain grade levels had dropped, and that drop was exactly identical to what they scored on the national average of the NAEP. And so the big problem with that is the NAEP is a general test, it's not a, it's not a grade level test, okay, it's a general knowledge.
And that's something that's given to our kids?
Yes, every year.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's only for certain grade levels, so it's hard to correlate seventh grade to eighth grade because seventh grade doesn't take NAEP, it's fourth, sixth, and eighth, by the way, okay? And so when you look at how kids are scoring on a national average on a general knowledge test as opposed to how they're scoring on a standards-based test and a grade level test, those two numbers shouldn't match, but Oklahoma has made the decision that the OSTP scores are going to match what the national average scores are on the NAEP, and are not even close to the same test. So if you go back and look at and do some research on the NAEP, you're going to see that chances are, if that mindset remains, it'll always look like this. And the state will continue to tell 60% of our kids that they're failures.
Yeah, that's, our kids are smarter than what this is showing.
Yeah, and I think if you go back and really do some research, you'll know what two words I'm talking about, so.
Okay, these are our students that took the ACT this past spring, so these are, they were juniors last year and obviously they're seniors this year, will be graduating in 2020. Anyway, this was just for 11th grade math, and you can see here, we were 17.4 and state average is 17.7, and I mean, that's really just, we're talking about fractions of a point, obviously, or in this case, it's really not percentage points because the ACT goes from zero to 35, and this is the average score, was a 17.7, and our kids were scoring 17.4, okay? So just so everyone understands that. English, 16.1 and 17.2, so just a little bit less than one point below on that. Science, 18.3 and 18.5, so just about, you know, like I said, two tenths from being right there. And then reading is 18.4 and 18.9, so we're reading pretty close there. And on the English part, I know our teachers have been working really hard on usage and grammar, and it just seems like, you know, we've been focusing so much on reading, you know, in the lower levels and elementary levels, that some of the grammar is kind of taking a backseat with all the reading that they've been doing, and so we, our English teachers have been working really hard on usage, and if you go into their rooms, you know, the first few minutes of class, a lot of them are put the paragraph up, kids have to identify, you know, punctuation, capitalization, usage, subject verb agreement, and things like that, so they're working really hard at kind of bridging that gap and getting back to some of the traditional grammar that we've kind of lost here in years past. And another thing that we're working really hard on, all of our math teachers, you study island, all of them across the board, and on Fridays, they are working on ACT prep and math on Study Island, Study Island has a program for ACT prep and they're working on that. And then all of our freshmen that are in our ICAT class, that's that career exploration class, they are doing reading and ELA work on Study Island every Friday in ICAT class. So we're trying to kind of combine some of that in that class as well. And then on composite, 17.6 overall is what we scored for juniors, and then the state average was 18.2, so that's all the subject areas combined composite score. Another thing that we're going to be doing this spring, I think will be really beneficial, we've got two ladies coming in during professional day, which is President's Day, and they're going to be working in the morning with math and English, and then the afternoon, reading and science. And what they're going to do is meeting individually with those teachers and talk to them about strategies for preparing for and doing well and succeeding on the ACT, and it's from a student's standpoint and also from a teacher's perspective. So we're going to spend pretty much an entire day doing test prep, strategies and activities to prepare our kids to be more comfortable when they do take the ACT. The biggest thing that we've struggled with is it is a timed test and the tests that they've been taking, you know, until this point are pretty much unlimited, I mean, they take all the time they want, if they need extended time, they get that. ACT is different, like math is 60 problems in 60 minutes, and so you've got to get your kids used to going from an un timed test to a test that's actually timed, where they have to complete it in a certain amount of time. So our math teachers have really been working hard on their benchmarks and semester tests to actually give them timed tests, and we actually have a block schedule where first and second period, they take the, you know, 60 problem test. So we're trying to do things to give them practice so that they are prepared for that when they do take the ACT. But one thing we've also done is our sophomores take the pre-ACT, and they just took that a few weeks ago, and then we actually compare what they made on that. Pre-ACT as a sophomore to what they're scoring as a junior, so we're actually tracking and monitoring growth there, and I think that's beneficial to get them to some practice before they actually take the real thing as a junior. And then this is pretty interesting here, basically what ACT has done, some research, and there are certain scores that they have basically said that if you can score, for example, in reading, if you can score 18 on the ACT, then you have a 50% chance that you'll make at least a B in a college-level class like Hump One, and a 75% chance you'll make a C or higher. So basically what they're saying is if you've met the benchmarks in four subject areas, reading, English, math, and science, then you should be able to make, they're telling you there's 50 to 75% chance you'll make at least a B or C in that college-level equivalent class. And so basically on state here, this 12% here, this is actually a percentage, 12% of them met all of the benchmarks and that's the state average, and Guthrie Public Schools are juniors this year, 11% of them, so basically we're, you know, like I said, we've got a point on this particular area as well for the benchmark test. But anyway, I said, we're not far off, considering that we test all of our students, including our special education. including our special education students. And so even though the number has gone up, we're slowly, basically lowering that gap between the state average and what we're scoring here in our district and high school. So anyway, but we're always trying to improve and get better. Any questions?
Thank you.
I have just questions in general to ask, I guess, the administrators. It seems like that our biggest problem probably is the computer, testing on the computer. I would feel like the scores would probably be a little bit higher if they weren't doing that, especially at a third grade level when they still need to be learning how to write. How are we getting like to the fifth grade level where Susan is, where they have to actually take the writing test to know how to actually keyboard to get those instead of hunt and peck? I mean, what are we doing? How are we? I know we don't have enough computers, that's number one problem, but...
We've gotten to the point at guests where I have to, where each team of teachers, like the two fifth grade English teachers have a computer card to share, a Google Chromebook card to share, both math teachers have one to share, where I've got out of my 10 classrooms at each grade level, each grade level has five Chromebook cards. And then I still have two computerized. We've just slowly built that around fundraisers, Title I monies, things like that that have been available, is where we're at with it.
So what we're working on is a free program at their TYPING.com, and during our library time, our library is going in and working with those kids on typing skills. She has self-rewards within herself that she does, I guess essentially out of her pocket, you know, type thing, to kind of encourage the kids to do that, so hopefully that helps.
I think we're kind of doing the same thing that all the pre-K before sites with the free programs, trying to get their hands on the typing. And then OSTP also has a practice test, it's not much of a practice test, but it is where they can log on to the computer and kind of get a feel for what it's going to be like to take it. But again, it's not, once they get on there and take the three or four questions as they air, wasn't it like you've got to have other programs such as Steady Island, or maybe Math or something that we're using to try and get their hand in the on computer more frequently. Test them that way. Thank you.
I have a comment too, just for the general public. I mean, one of our last committee meetings, we had several of the principals come in and kind of share some of the site-specific work that they're doing to improve student comprehension of the different subjects, to help improve the scores. And I made this comment, I don't remember if it was during one of the principals being in there or after, but I just wanted to let you know that I'm very impressed with the collaboration that you do within your sites, and as Todd mentioned, starting to collaborate site to site, where you're able to get that information and make those improvements. And my hat's just off to you, I think you have a lot of respect for the efforts that you are putting forth and the pride that you take in your groups, your kids. Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number 11, consent agenda, rule item A, can we consent to that? I have a motion, please.
I move we approve the consent agenda excluding item A.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
And a motion to approve consent agenda item A.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve consent item, consent agenda item A.
Selective. Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Smithley.
Abstain.
Five I's, zero N's.
Okay, agenda item 12A, recommendations, consideration, and action to adopt calendar of regularly scheduled school board meetings for 2020.
Page 33 of your board packet has the memo that will be sent to the county clerk upon approval. It's a reminder to the board that beginning with the January regular board meeting, we will begin those meetings at 6:30 as opposed to 7 o'clock. And the calendar this year fell fairly natural. There's been some times that we had to move around because of the Fourth of July, the July board meeting. We don't have those challenges this time, and at this time, we see no conflict. I think there was one time that we moved a regular meeting to a different date because we knew we had some stuff when we were involved with the University of Virginia. We don't have that issue either, so I would recommend approval of this, and then it will be filed with the county clerk for the 2020 calendar year. And this is a calendar year issue, not a, not a fiscal year issue.
Madam President, I make a motion to adapt the calendar for regular scheduled school board meetings for 2020.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
Agenda item 12B, recommendation, consideration, and action upon renewal agreement with Northwest Evaluation Association.
This is, on pages 34 and 35 of your board packet, this is a six-month request to continue with the math testing for the, and Carmen, that is to the remainder of this school year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The calendar has been a little bit off on this one, because we ended up, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we ended up with six months free.
Correct.
At one point, that kind of got us off on the fiscal year. We're going to straighten that out and look at possibly some different options at the end of this fiscal year as well. Is Carmen, is there anything that you'd like to add there?
No, just, basically, it's just half the cost, so instead of the $16,000, you're seeing half of that because of the, just the semester.
Recommend approval.
Do you have a motion?
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the agreement with Northwest Evaluation Association. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
Agenda item 12C, recommendation, consideration, and action upon revision to district policy C28, selection of a construction manager.
This is on page 36 of your board packet, and knock on wood, this will be the last of the policy revisions parade that I brought you for this fiscal year, but there are no guarantees. This is the first of them. We may, we had one technical, I think a grammatical catch that someone caught that we made one little revision in, but as presented in your packet, that's what we bring to you for approval.
Madam President, I move that we approve C28, selection of a construction manager. Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
Agenda item 12D, recommendation, consideration, and action upon revision to district policy E46, dyslexia awareness program.
This is something that through the last legislative session was mandated to begin in 2020, 21 school year, and you have presented, recommend approval.
Madam President, I move that we approve district policy E46, dyslexia awareness program. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
Agenda item 12E, recommendation, consideration, and action upon revision to district policy F5A, transfer policy.
This is an item, this is a revision of our policy. We tabled this at the last board meeting, and since the tabling, we've made one minor revision, the approval of our attorney under approval of transfers that I believe I got you guys highlighted. Recommend approval as presented tonight.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve district policy F5A, excuse me, district policy F5A, transfer policy. Second.
Discussion.
It's long. It's really long.
Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
Agenda item 12F, recommendation, consideration, and action upon revision to district policy F13A, student diabetes care and management.
It's a policy that we brought, page 53 through 55, we brought to the board for first reading last month. This is something that we've not had in policy, but we've had in practice, and we want to, we want to memorialize this as a policy, as a recommendation of our attorney, recommend approval.
Madam President, I move that we approve district policy F13A, student diabetes care and management.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
Agenda item 13, proposed executive session for the purpose of discussing employment of personnel, FMLA requests, resignation separation from employment, and transfer of position requests, all as set out on the personnel reports and discussion of extra duty assignments as listed for 2019, 2020, disclosure of which information would violate the confidentiality requirements of state and/or federal law, all pursuant to 25 Oklahoma statute, section 307b, 1 and 7.
I move we go into executive session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
Okay, only items that agenda number 13, agenda item number 13, were discussed in executive session, and no votes were taken. This shall constitute the executive session minutes. Agenda item number 14, vote as on action is set out on the personnel reports.
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the personnel report.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
Agenda item 15, action upon recommendation of extra duty assignments for 2019, 2020. Motion.
Madam President, I move that we approve the extra duty assignments for 2019 and 2020.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
Agenda item number 16, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have one that I want to consider tonight. You've got to, this is Connor Williams, title Reed Teacher, Bethany Junior High. Recommend that we accept this effective December 20th of 2019.
Do we have a motion?
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Connor Williams.
Circuit. Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Plag.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calee.
Yes.
Smithley.
Yes.[1762.12]